San Mateo County Planning Commission hearings of July 27, 2022 will please come to order. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Janet, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Kwan.
Here.
Chair Gupta.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and support from Montes. Thank you.
We move on to the oral communications at this time. Public may speak on any subject that's not on today's agenda. Could you please explain the process for public comments, Janet?
Sure. I don't see anybody on the line for public. Did you still want me to go ahead and do the further recording or are you okay to skip it?
Go ahead and explain it just in case anybody drops in.
All right, hold on just a second. Oh, there it is. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments during the general public comment period. And for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. You will have five minutes to do so. Let's see. So everybody has their hands raised. I will call them now and I don't see anybody with their hands raised here.
Okay, so seeing no public speakers, we'll now close the oral communications. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Remove the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Kwan.
Hi.
Chair Gupta.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, so motion passes four to zero. Let's move on to our regular agenda. Item three. Janet, would you please read the item for the record?
Yes. Owner applicant Charlie Floyd, file number PLN 2002-00727, location unincorporated Sangue Goryo, and our project planner is Olivia Boo.
Is Olivia?
Yes, I think Janet needs to promote her to panelists, so.
So attempted. I don't know if Olivia is able to approve the. There we go. Thank you. Thanks, Angela.
Okay, there I go. Is anyone, everyone able to see my screen?
Looks good.
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, planning staff, and county council. My name is Olivia Boo and I will be walking you through this project for coastal development permit, a planned agricultural permit for a domestic well to serve, potentially serve a future single-family residence in the unincorporated Sangue Goryo area. I will be describing the project scope. I'm show you a few photos, discuss the project's compliance, and discuss public comment. For the project description, the proposal is to drill a domestic well to serve a future single-family residence. Three possible well locations have been identified. If the first well did not yield water, the proposal includes two metal plates measuring four feet by sixteen feet, which will be placed across an existing drainage ditch tributary that exists on the property. This will provide, the steel plates will provide adequate access for the drill, well-drill vehicle to reach the well location. The well locations are clustered together and approximately sixty-five feet from the front property line. Minimal grading and notch removal is proposed. The property is not visible from La Honda Road. It is located behind existing developments where there is a single-family residence. These are a few photos showing the driveway access. And the left photo is, I am facing the property. It's to the location is approximately, you can see my mouse approximately this location. And then this view on the bottom, the lower photo is looking at the opposite direction more towards La Honda Road. This is another view. I just wanted to kind of show you that it is very, very heavily vegetated. So this is an overall map. I wanted to kind of give you the vicinity and location, La Honda Road. And then the in yellow is the subject parcel. The arrow, the bottom arrow shows the approximate well location. There is residential, again residential located here, which is the project is, the site is behind this existing residential. Residential over here as well. There is a camp, Optimist Volunteer Camp located to the east. And then Mid Pen Open Space Reserve has this land across of La Honda Road. This is a copy of photo image of the parcel. And the, just to clarify that this, although these outlines of structures are shown, this is conceptual only at this time. The steel plates, which are being proposed, will go over the edge and existing drainage ditch approximately in this location. And then this is, to the right is a enlarged view of that same drainage ditch and the proposed steel plates. Factors in terms of locating the wells, and I'm sorry, this is the approximate well location. Factors that came into play for this is the Sangue Goryo Creek is along the east side. And it also circles down on the southern portion. And then conceptually, because the applicant currently has a conceptual idea to for future development or potential future development, if the water is found, he had to consider proper driveway access per fire requirements, locating water tanks, the single-family residence, and then septic. So all those factors being considered, required to be considered, the dwell location was chosen to be approximately in this location. In terms of the chronology, this project has been around. So the, it was initially received in 2002 and it was deemed incomplete. Over the years, it had multiple scope project changes from multiple times and in part due to some restrictions he had with developing limitations. It changed quite a few times proposal from pursuing solely the domestic well to then possibly the whole package of the domestic well plus the single-family development. And it went definitely multiple times going between doing just the well and then doing the whole package. He did, the applicant did pursue also trying to obtain water adjudication, and that was also a challenge. And the water adjudication would have been in place in lieu of, instead of the domestic well being proposed. He also did, the other proposals included farming agricultural possibilities. And then when he, the few, the times I was pursuing the single-family development, he was having to work with environmental health for a septic system. So all of those various proposals were over the year, those several year span. In September of 2015, a mitigated NEVDEC was published. There was comments on the riparian, and so the applicant was asked to revise the biology report, which is included as an attachment. March 8, 2021, it went to the Agribisery Committee and recommended for approval. There were some questions, right, which I will go, I will discuss later in this presentation. In August of 2021, a revised public, revised mitigated negative declaration was published and comments were received, which I will also go into more detail. In March of 2022, the project was revised. Initially, the project included installing a culvert into the drainage channel that I had discussed earlier. And there was public comment received on that based on the published mitigated negative declaration. And so the applicant thus changed the project scope to steel plates. And then in June, the project was deemed complete upon this revision and then to today for the public hearing. In terms of project conformity, it does comply with the general plan and local coastal program for the general plan for the vegetative water, fish, and wildlife resources policies, the soil resources, visual quality, and rural land use. For the local coastal program, local locating and planning new development, agriculture, and sensitive habitats. For the zoning conformity for the planned agricultural district regulations, it complies with setbacks and with the planned agricultural permit requirements for general criteria, water supply criteria, and criteria for conversion of other lands. For the environmental review, as mentioned, it was, there was mitigated negative declaration published August 18th to September 7th of 2021. And the following public comment was received regarding the drainage channel tributary. The commenter had stated that the man-made drainage channel is a naturally formed tributary. It is either ephemeral or intermittent and should be protected as such. The commenter did submit a biologist report prepared by consultant SWCA. The report did conclude that the tributary is likely considered jurisdictional under one or more of the regulating agencies, specifically the United States Army Corps of Engineering, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the California Department of Fishing Game. Thus, SWCA concluded that a formal jurisdictional delineation should be performed to confirm the jurisdiction and regulations and permits that, additional permits that would be required. In response to these, to the public comments, the project at Biologists is WRA. And they confirmed that no riparian, reconfirmed that no riparian vegetation was present along the drainage channel tributary. The, any potential aquatic resource jurisdiction boundaries would end at the top of the bank for this drainage channel. And the steel plates that are now being proposed would be, would be inappropriate and would not impact the resources. Thus, the applicant did revise the project to include the steel plate in lieu of the culvert and and then based on the environmental review, the change did not, this change of the steel plate is not considered a substantial revision requiring recirculation of the mitigated negative declaration. For the Agriculture Advisory Committee, for their public hearing, public comment was received for this that the well test locations are located in the area that neighbor, the neighbor indicated gets flooded and recommendation is to install a taller cap on the walls so water does not get in. Staff did consult environmental health to confirm that the well is required to meet the requirements of the county well ordinance, which includes the wellhead must be constructed so that it excludes surface water. For the second comment, the public did not see how the well would not have an effect on water sources. Again, environmental health did review this project and the well does meet the fifty-foot setback required and is not expected to conflict with surrounding waterways. I also wanted to mention, just prior to this, that staff did receive a email correspondence from Mid Pen, who again is located on the other side of La Honda Road in the north direction, their regional open space. They did have questions on impacts. They did request to review the mitigated negative declaration. Staff did send that over to them and they have no further comment at this time. That is the end of my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Boo. Do Commissioners have any questions? Ms. Ketchum?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah. When I look at the maps and see the 100-year flood estimate line, that's based on historical record and not our present best guess where it would be going forward in future years.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. So when I look at the maps, it has the estimate for the 100-year flood. I presume that is based on the historical record and not our best guess where we'll be going forward due to climate change.
I would, I would agree with that. I'm not an expert, but I on that, but I would agree with that.
Yeah. Just because my background is geography and, you know, the last 150 years is fairly stable going forward. But what I see and is that looks that it appears to dryness followed by maybe a week of getting rain that is just horrendous and gives you your year's worth of rain in a month and you end up with a lot of debris and flooding, which is not as likely in the past. And that's just my personal interpretation. But, but the benchmark we're using is one in the past and I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. I'm done with having questions.
Commissioner Serrano Kwan, do you have questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Chair Gupta, if I can just interrupt really fast to fix your camera, because I can't see your face anymore. I think I just see.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Um, oh.
I don't know what happened. Did anything change?
Looks like your camera is off now. If you're having difficulty with the video, I think we can proceed just on your audio.
No, I think I pushed something. Let me, just give me a moment.
Sure.
Just to start your video. Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the angle of the camera appears to be pointed to your desk. In some papers, I think if you could adjust the angle of your camera, that might fix the problem.
It's, it's my iPad, so it's either facing like it's.
Oh, maybe you reverse the camera, you know, so it's facing the other direction.
Just give me a moment.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Oh, oh, okay.
There you are.
Okay.
There you go.
Did that work? Okay. All right. Okay. The buttons are so small sometimes. Okay, great. Okay, so I just had some, some some more questions about, about the well exploration itself. It said that there are three possible locations that, that would be looked at. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. And so right now, we don't know whether any of them will work. Is that?
That's, that's correct. I actually spoke to, when in speaking with environmental health more recently, they said that they couldn't affirm that finding domestic water in Sangue Goryo is actually very hit and miss. And then generally speaking, when we receive applications to pursue a domestic well, we encourage people to, the general rule, it will ask them to pursue approximately up to three in case the first two, they're not successful in reaching domestic water that complies with environmental health regulations. So then, because, you know, a permit is required, so we, at some, at some point historically, we decided that up to three, so it gives people under one planning permit to pursue at least a handful of locations.
Okay, okay. And typically, if they do find one, the water is fit for residential use. Is that? Is that correct?
Correct. It will have, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's correct. They will have to go through the testing and regulations that is handled by environmental health.
Okay, okay. All right. So that, that is good. And you had also mentioned that something about like water is not the only thing that they would need for also having a single-family residence built there. They would also need a septic system, but, but that is, that will be in the future.
That's correct. They would need to apply for, the applicant would need to apply for a separate new application for the same type of permit to pursue future development.
Future development for that. Okay, okay. And just from my understanding, this, these steel plates that we are talking about for vehicle access, these are going to be permanent steel plates there. If they, if they go ahead and find a well there.
This is.
Olivia, your mic cut out there. I don't know if you had.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So this is for the purposes, the steel plates are for the purposes solely of pursuing the domestic wells. They will have to comply with both fire for access purposes and and I believe actually it's on private property, so it's going to be fire jurisdiction to provide adequate access.
Okay, only during exploration.
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you so much. That's all I have at this time. Do we have, does staff want to add anything? Steve, is there anything you would like to add to it or should we open it up to the applicant?
Well, just to sum up, you know, as you stated, this is all about trying to find water for the possibility of future development. Certainly a constrained site. And the project's been years and making a lot of back and forth about what the applicant wants and is applied for. At this point, it's really limited to seeing if the site's got a viable water source with regard to the crossing of the creek. I think, you know, this, the use of plates is just a temporary access means that's one of the things we need to consider when we're looking at the creation of a new well is what sort of disturbance is going to occur to the land in conjunction with the drilling of the new well? In this case, you know, they'll be able to access it from an existing driveway. They can avoid any impacts to the creek by placing these metal steel plates. But my expectation would be that those metal plates will be removed and not remain as permanent feature. This is just simply for purposes of trying to find a well. Once that is done, the plates will need to be removed and any long-term access will be dependent upon the applicant fulfilling all the various permit requirements with all the applicable agencies. So I think this is just a first step in a longer-term process to determine if this site is developable.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair. Can we have the applicant give any comments or presentation they wish to the commission before we open this to the public?
Right, right. Of course, of course. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. So do we have the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's bring the applicant and they have fifteen minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Charles Floyd and I've been trying to pursue this property for many years. Like Olivia said, I have gone back and forth on what I plan on doing based on the restrictions that, that I were up against, you know, in the process of developing this property. It is a nice piece of property. Based on the plan Olivia showed you, I was able to meet all the setbacks required by the county of San Mateo and by Environmental Health Department. And as far as the well goes, you know, you do the three test sites in case you don't get water at the first one. You get the option to get two other additional sites to drill and find out if you can get water on those locations. So that's the purpose of the three different sites. That's what's allowed up to three through environmental health. It's something that I like to pursue. I, you know, I'm getting up and aging. I'm getting towards retirement and I think it'd be a great piece of property. Great place for me to live out the rest of my life if I was able to do so, get this thing developed. And as far as the, the well being in a flood zone, I don't think this, the well locations are in the flood zone. We had to double check and look at the 100-year flood map, but based on me putting this whole thing together, I'm pretty sure it is out of the flood zone. And as far as someone commented, I think it was public comment said that that area floods. That area where the proposed well sites are never did really get to a flooded location. I know it did flood lower maybe thirty, forty feet, fifty feet lower than. I know it did flood lower, maybe 30, 40 feet, 50 feet lower than the present proposed well location, but not where the well location is now. I wouldn't want to put a proposed well site in an area that would potentially flood, so that's that shouldn't be an issue. And other than that. You know, I'm open for questions if anybody has any questions about my plans or my project and what do I intend to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum, you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much for your talk. We'll, at this time, we'll open the discussion to. Sorry. We have the public speakers. Do we? Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, Chair, we actually have one hand raised for this item. Give me one second. That was Lenny Roberts. And let me put the timer up really fast. Ms. Roberts.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Green Foothills, and I'd like to welcome the new commissioner. We haven't met. And I hope you enjoy this. This commission, it's a very important commission, especially as it relates to all the. Land on the coastal in the coastal zone, which is this is one a parcel in the coastal zone. And I've been. Monitoring and commenting on development proposals on in San Mateo County. For many years, decades. So on this project. I just wanted to point out that the San Gregorio Creek. The entire San Gregorio Creek, which this project is adjacent to, the entire creek watershed. Has been subject to an adjudication process due to insufficient water in the creek. To serve all the different uses that have applications and have water rights to use the creek water. So the creek is already very constrained. The people, all the people who do have water rights to take water out of the creek primarily for. Irrigation purposes for agriculture and other. Other uses that you are subject to are allowable to use creek water. So it's already a very constrained watershed and. The. The actual. Ability of people to drill and find sufficient water even for a single family residence is is not guaranteed by any means. So. One of the concerns is that this particular well location may potentially be tapping into what is called the underflow of the creek or. Water associated with the creek itself. But that has not been analyzed in the neck deck. And. I, let's see, what was I going to say? So, oh, I know the pump test for these wells. Really needs to be done during the dry season rather than in the winter season. Because if the creek, if the if the wells or a well is actually has some hydrologic continuity with with the creek. It it could well produce adequate water. But it will actually be affecting that the overall creek. The stream flow in the creek. So we would like to be sure that the pump tests are are done during the dry season. And the other issue that I want to just, oh, I don't, the. Steve, I was mentioned that the steel, the steel plates will need to be removed. I don't know. I haven't looked at the staff report that carefully. But has that been made a condition of approval of the coastal development permit that the steel plates would be removed? I also concur with the comments by the other members of the public that this is undoubtedly, and this is an ephemeral stream. If it if it's been channelized. In this particular area, that doesn't really change the nature of the of the and the character of the stream itself. So thank you for my for allowing me to speak. So I just want to be sure you have both conditions that that. The. The well pump test should be done in the summer. Months, not in the winter and. That the condition be included that removes the steel plates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. With that, there's no more hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. So since there are no more. Speakers, we. If commissioners have. No objections, we close the public comments at this time. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I opened this up for the deliberations for the. Commissioners. Commissioner Ketchum, would you like to go ahead?
Oh, thank you. I. I concur with the suggestion that we should include a condition that the pump test should be done in the dry season. That's all I have at this time.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I like to ask Mr. Fox a question, and it's about water rights. And that's always a complicated thing in California. But basically, what did he say? Water rights run that. First come, first served.
I confess that water rights are an area of the law that is a thing unto itself. And I don't hold myself out as any kind of expert. I know that there are. Claims to prior use, so that if you establish use from at least surface water. You are entitled to continue to use it and the upstream users have to allow you adequate flow for you to continue to have your your historic use. But I'm not sure exactly how those rules would apply here, and and I wouldn't hold myself out as as any kind of expert on that without having researched the question.
Okay. And I concur with Lisa's comment about. Drilling in the dry season. I don't have any more questions or discussions at the moment.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
I have no questions or comments at the moment.
I had a question about. Removal of the steel plates that was mentioned by Ms. Roberts. The steel plates. The location of the steel plates is is that on? Private property or is that on?
Yes, it's on the applicant's property.
Applicant's property.
Yeah, there's a drainage ditch that in order to allow the drill rig to get to the sites, they need to cross this drainage. And so the steel plate is a temporary span, if you will, that will allow the drill rig to access the test sites.
Right. So. So so is that something that we can? We control as to whether we remove them?
Yes, I believe, yeah, the installation of the steel plates is part of the development proposal. Placement of those plates constitutes development and it is subject to conditions of approval that are. Appropriate to ensure that that development occurs in a manner that's consistent with our local coastal program policies. And I would agree with Ms. Roberts that it would be appropriate to include a condition that requires timely removal of those plates once the test is completed. In fact, I think I was just looking through the conditions of approval to see if. There were any requirements for the removal of the place that currently are not. So I'd suggest that. The the that we add a condition of approval that would require the place to be removed within 30 days of the completion of the. Drilling about other, the, how do we say it, the evaluation of the water supply.
Okay, okay.
And in addition, you know, this this suggestion that the testing be done in the dry season. I understand the rationale behind it because it relates to the sustainability of a long term water supply to support residential use. I think it's in the applicant's interest to do the test in a manner that will address the long term sustainability of it. And. I think it would be appropriate for the commission to include in the record your observations that, in your view. In order to determine if there is a sustainable long term source of water here, the test should be done in the dry season. You know, requiring them to do it during the dry season, I don't know if that's really necessary as long as it's made clear that. If you do it in the wet season, that's in our view is not going to be adequate to demonstrate long term sustainability for a resident. So I I think it's up to the commission, you know, whether or not you want to include that as a condition or is basically an advisory statement. If you understand what I'm saying.
Right, right. No, I think to be make sense to include both these. In improper format within our approval conditions.
Yes, sure, fair enough. And I would suggest that should the commission desire to add a condition regarding the timing of the. Water supply evaluation. I think it should be somewhere in the nature of. Referencing why it's important that the test be done during the dry season in order to evaluate the long term sustainability of the water supply. So just to provide some rationale behind that condition.
I I agree with that. I let commissioners decide. Commissioner Ketchum, does that sound right to you?
Yes, I was thinking something like just the, so the condition would be to demonstrate long term sustainability, pump test should be done in the dry season. And then the other one would be remove the steel plates within 30 days of completion, the valuation of water supply. That's what I get from what the director was saying.
Is that a motion you're going to put forward?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I could do that when you're ready.
If this is all second your your motion.
Well, that was the added, that was what we added, but the motion itself hasn't been stated yet. Should I do that now or does anybody else want to chime in? Any further comments? Okay. Okay, so I move that we, the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit and planned agricultural district permit county file number PLN. Two thousand two dash zero zero seven two seven by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval listed in attachment A of the staff report. And including additional conditions to demonstrate long term sustainability, the pump test should be done in the dry season. And another condition to remove steel plates within 30 days of completion and the evaluation of the water supply.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes.
So motion passes four to zero. So we move on to. Item four. Correspondence and other matters.
Thank you, Chair Gupta. I do not have any correspondence addressed to the planning commission to report to you today. So I will go ahead and move on to item five. Study session. We had actually been contemplating bringing for the informational item on the. Upcoming building code adoption cycle. As you heard from the county's offices sustainability. You know, part of our climate action plan includes supplementing the building code to achieve certain. Objectives for emission reductions. The. Office of Sustainability is planning on presenting to you their plan for what we call the reach codes and. Unfortunately, I will be out on vacation at the next meeting, so. And I'd like to be a part of that conversation regarding the reach code. So that was the only item we had on the agenda for next month. That's the August 10th agenda, so I'm actually recommending that we postpone that meeting. So that I can participate in that reach code study session, which will schedule for the following meeting. With regard to the director's report, I wanted to let you guys know what happened at the board of supervisors meeting yesterday. You may recall the Palmer project, which was the property in North Arrocks that included of. Close to 10,000 square foot sliver of land that was formerly in the city of Atherton, got detached from Atherton, and they were had plans to reuse that property. So that project was approved by the board of supervisors yesterday. And I'm also pleased to report that the board unanimously accepted the connect the coast side. Comprehensive transportation plan for the coast. Miraculously, there was no controversy and full support of the plan, so I think that that's. Positive news, and I think we're well positioned now to move forward with some of the important projects envisioned by that plan. With regard to upcoming board meetings. The continuance of the Zeme subdivision has been postponed till September 13th. So. I will update you at the second meeting in August about what's happening with that hearing. And then I thought I'd close with just. Little discussion about the future of. Our online meetings because it appears that we might be facing the end of. The emergency action that allows us to meet remotely. And I've been informed that the. Proposed. Change in law that would be required to allow that us to continue with online meetings is. Is not survived the challenges against it. So I I don't have a specific date that we'll need to resume in person meetings, but I just wanted to put that on your radar because I think that could be coming in the near future. The board of supervisors, as you may know, has gone to a hybrid format and. I was in the chambers yesterday, so at first time since COVID started that we, I was in the in person meeting. So I've got to say it was nice to be back in person and so. I'm actually looking forward to having an opportunity to meet with you again in person. But I'll do my best to keep you informed of what that's looking like in terms of timing. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question. This regards. The Cypress Point Affordable Housing Project and Moss Beach, and I've been getting some calls, questions from people about what the process will be.
questions from people about what the process will be. They've they've submitted their application for CDP. And um I guess one of the complications I that I can't answer is the um buzz a lot I can't answer, but uh so after the phase one, the LCP update was certified by the coastal commission. Uh the a lawsuit was filed against the coastal commission and the county too, I think. And and from what I understand, the timeline of that lawsuit, uh they won't be getting a hearing until early next year at the earliest. So I just wondered how that affects the process, the county's process for the CDP. I mean, will they proceed in processing it and but but then I would assume a decision would need to wait for that lawsuit or something? How that how will that work?
Well, I I'll tell you what I know and then let counsel correct me. And that is that unless a judge tells us to not process it, we will process it. And unless the planning commission is directed by the courts not to render a decision, then it will be up to you to make the decision you think is appropriate under the law, notwithstanding the fact there's this outstanding legal challenge. Am I correct, counsel?
That's correct.
So things will proceed as though there was no lawsuit unless the court tells you to do otherwise.
That's correct.
Okay, and then the other thing is um, oh, the the project webpage, the county county has says that the CDP will have a hearing at the planning commission and the board of supervisors. And I wondered why that is.
That is because um you might recall that in conjunction with the LCP amendment, there was going to be a general plan amendment. Um and that general plan amendment um needs to go to the board. So the permit will be you know, I I'm gonna have to perhaps consult with the team in terms of will if the permit action will be separate from the by the planning commission from the general plan amendment or if the whole package will go to the board. I don't think we've made a final determination on that. Generally speaking, the coastal permit would be final with the planning commission unless appealed by the board supervisors. But as I said, we have this uh general plan amendment in that needs to be processed in conjunction with the process and that will need to go to the board supervisors.
I hadn't uh realized or forgot that the GP amendment had not been dealt with. I think I had oh, the other thing, one more thing about this. So the SEQA review for the CDP. So there was um a sort of pseudo neg deck that was done for the LCP amendment in order to, as I understand it, was to supply that information to the coastal commission as they process the LCP amendment and uh planning staff said at the time that when the CDP was applied for, there would be a SEQA review. What what form would that take?
Yes, that's correct. Um we have um issued a request for proposals for contracting firm to prepare an environmental impact report. And so we're in the process of evaluating those proposals at the moment. And we expect to have that contract in place in the near future for the preparation of the full environmental impact report, which will include an initial study and notice of preparation. So that will be the first point. Once we have the contract in place where uh the public will have the opportunity to inform the preparers of the EIR about the issues that they think should be evaluated by the EIR. Um just getting back to your statement about what was prepared for the coastal commission. I I I wouldn't call it a pseudo negative declaration, but with all due respect, um it's uh really the coastal commission process is considered to be the functional equivalent of SEQA because they do a rigorous environmental review. And so what we submitted to them in conjunction with the LCP amendment was some of the background studies that we believed would be needed by them to complete a functional equivalent SEQA review. And I think just what I'm talking about right now is kind of the meat of the lawsuit, if you will, that's pending. And so we'll see how that all plays out. But in the meantime, we'll continue to process this in accordance with our standard procedures.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean to denigrate it by using the term. I just didn't know what to call it. It was
Yeah.
A unique animal. So this is very helpful. And and if you could keep us up to date as as news comes along, that would be appreciated. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Chair Gupta, I think you're frozen. You must be near the North Pole, joining Commissioner Hanson on his I'm not sure what happened to the chair. Perhaps she's got some connectivity issues, but um I think we were at the point of commissioner questions. So if there's any additional questions that any of the commissioners may have, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Yeah, we lost her again.
I think she must be dropping off and trying to reconnect, I guess.
So is there any further questions? I'll pick it up from here.
Thanks.
If if not, we we might as well adjourn.
Very good. I thank you all for your participation today and wish you all a good um. I guess it will be until August twenty fourth that uh I see you again. So um enjoy the rest of your summer and we'll see you then.
Thank you. You have a good day.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Bye.